The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, for the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:00 PM, the 23rd day of February, and we're convening in the Alexander O'Connor Auditorium. The presiding officer is Maria Velado, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Mr. John J. Neese, our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Kopas, our Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Ms. Jennifer Vettiorelli, Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, Dr. Gary Maeda, Board Secretary, Mr. Daniel Castle, School Business Administrator, Mr. Thomas Figueroa Jr., Assistant School Business Administrator, Dr. Dennis Degnan, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Mark Main, he's our Board Counsel for this evening. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Burke, trustee Kasaius, trustee Egan is absent, trustee Godeski Rodriguez, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Gonzalez, welcome to the board. Nice to have you with us. Trustee Sclafane, trustee Wilbeck, Vice President Munoz is with us virtually, and he is present, and President Velado.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours giving the time, date, and location of this meeting was provided as follows. Notice was promptly posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with municipal clerk of the City of Bayonne, Ms. Medina.
Thank you. We'll start our meeting with approval of minutes and acceptance of communications. I remind everyone that our resolutions and agenda are all on the bulletin board and have been posted to the website. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by President Velado, and a second...
I'll make that second.
Second by trustee Kasaius on the approval of minutes and acceptance of communications. On that motion and second, trustee Burke, trustee Kasaius, trustee Egan is absent, trustee Godeski Rodriguez, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Sclafane, trustee Wilbeck, vice president Munoz, that's a yes, President Velado.
Yes.
Next up is our curriculum and instruction, Resolution A1 to A12. Do I have a motion? Motion by trustee Wilbeck, and a second by trustee Sclafane. So on that motion and second, trustee Burke, trustee Kasaius, trustee Egan is absent, trustee Godeski Rodriguez, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Sclafane, trustee Wilbeck, vice president Munoz, is a yes, and President Velado.
Yes.
Next up is our finance, Resolutions B1 through B20. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second. Motion by President Velado, and a second by trustee Gonzalez. On that motion and second, trustee Burke is going to recuse. Trustee Kasaius, trustee Egan is absent, trustee Godeski Rodriguez, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Sclafane, trustee Wilbeck, vice president Munoz, is a yes, President Velado.
Yes.
And finally, our personnel, which is Resolution C1 to C25. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Burke, and a second...
I'll second.
...by trustee Kasaius. On that motion and second, trustee Burke, trustee Kasaius, trustee Egan is absent, trustee Godeski Rodriguez, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Sclafane, trustee Wilbeck, vice president Munoz, President Velado.
Yes.
That is all I have before the board, but we do have one speaker. I'd like to introduce our student council representative, Bayonne High School, Ms. Alyssa O'Chee, who's going to step up, and she dropped off some issues of The Beacon for everybody that I handed out.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So glad to see you all here. Another month, another meeting. I hope you all had a marvelous Valentine's Day. I'm not sure of what the landscape of that looks like for you all, but at Bayonne High School, there were the expected premature "I love yous" and many more fake roses and balloons. But it has been a busy month for student government, and we have an even busier one coming up. To start, I wanted to let you all and everyone else know that the second edition of The Beacon is out. I'm actually editor-in-chief, and I'm blown away by the amazing work done by our team of writers, and so proud that we're finally able to share it with our community. I left a few copies for everyone, so please enjoy a look into what Bayonne High School is thinking this quarter. I and a few other members of The Beacon are going to be doing an interview with Ben TV coming up, and it's a really great opportunity, and we're so excited to collaborate with another hard-working group to give students insight on the process of developing a newspaper. Who knows, my film debut may become the next classic. I'm kidding. The Bayonne High School student government also had a successful Valentine's Day gram sale. For just $1, students can purchase a Valentine's Day gram for a friend, teacher, or even an enemy, and the student government hand-delivered them on the morning of Valentine's Day. It was a huge success, and we made about $200 with this profit going towards future events. On that same day, we also held our sweetheart dance chaired by one of our own members. One of the best events of the years was held for project-independent students. We had snacks, face painting, tattoos, lots of fun music, and even a photo booth. It was so much fun to deck out the house six gym for Valentine's Day and get groovy with some of our coolest peers. With the help of Ms. Patella and so many amazing aides, we all had a great afternoon of dancing and laughter. As for the near future, our volleyball tournament was rescheduled for March 18th. We're still expecting a great turnout and lots of friendly competition for a prize worth $300. One of our newer and less talked-about events, which may be the most exciting, is our upcoming spring formal. It's very difficult to translate into words how much we've pushed to have another dance after the wild success of our homecoming, but scheduled for Saturday, March 26th, it's arriving really soon. More details should be coming out soon via our Instagram page @bhs.stuga, but expect lots of fun music, food, and another great opportunity for photo ops. But apart from that, as I've said before, all's well in the halls of Bayonne High School. I wish all of you a lovely start to nicer weather, and I can't wait to see you all next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Woods, our BEA President.
This will be short tonight. I just want to say thank you to the district for recognizing Juneteenth and putting it on the calendar. I'm going to share a quote from Barack Obama about the importance of it and kind of where I see things are going in this district, and it makes me very happy to see that progress. So Barack Obama said, "Juneteenth has never been a celebration of victory or an acceptance of the way things are. It's a celebration of progress. It's an affirmation that despite the most painful parts of our history, change is possible." And there is still so much work to do. So again, I want to say thank you for recognizing it, putting it on the calendar, and it shows that we are making progress moving forward in a country, in our state, in our own city, and we're doing things to make people feel more accepted, and we're doing things to move the district in a really good direction. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make an announcement for the board. The board is going to adjourn to an executive session. The executive session is for a single HIB hearing. The board will return to the auditorium to act on one HIB matter. No other items will be discussed. So unless you're here for that HIB, you might want to just leave when we adjourn. Like I said, we will return, but for one item and one item only. Do I have a motion to adjourn for an executive session?
So moved.
President Velado, do I have a second? Trustee Gonzalez, thank you. So on that motion and second, to adjourn to an executive session, trustee Burke, trustee Kasaius, trustee Egan is absent, trustee Godeski Rodriguez, trustee Gonzalez, trustee Sclafane, trustee Wilbeck, vice president Munoz, is a yes, President Velado.
Yes.
It is 7:10. The board will adjourn to an executive session.
Okay, all right. Folks, I'm going to reconvene the public meeting. It is 7:56. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Burke. Trustee Casillas. Trustee Egan is absent. Trustee Godeski Rodriguez. Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Scafane. Trustee Wilbeck. We lost Vice President Munoz. And President Vlado is here. We have two resolutions. Resolutions D1 and D2. We'll vote on them separately. D1, whereas the Board of Education conducted a hearing on February 23, 2022, as to the administration's harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigation, determined determination relating to a student ID number 826727, whereas the hearing was requested by the parent for the purposes of appealing the termination of the administration, whereas the Board of Education in an executive session considered all relevant facts and arguments made by both the parents of the student and the school administration. Whereas the Board of Education considered the definition of HIB, pursuant to NJSA 18A 3713. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education concurs with the conclusions of the administration, directs the board attorney to provide the request notice to the parents as required pursuant to NJ's, New Jersey's Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. I have a motion. By President Vlado, and I have a second by Trustee Scafane. On that motion, and second, Trustee Burke. Trustee Casillas. Trustee Egan is absent. Trustee Godeski Rodriguez. Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Scafane. Trustee Wilbeck. Vice President Munoz is absent. President Vlado is a yes. And our second. D2, whereas the Board of Education conducted a hearing February 23, 2022, as to the administration's harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigation related to student ID 826727, whereas said hearing was requested by the parent of the student for the purposes of appealing, whereas the Board of Ed in executive session considered all relevant facts and arguments made by both the parent of the student and school administration, whereas Board of Education considered the definition of HIB, pursuant to NJSA 18A 3713. Therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education concurs with the conclusions of the administration, directs the board attorney to provide the request notice to the parents of ID 826727, required pursuant to New Jersey's Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Do I have a motion? By President Vlado, and a second by Trustee Scafane. On that motion, and second for D2. Trustee Burke. Trustee Casillas. Trustee Egan is absent. Trustee Godeski Rodriguez. Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Scafane. Trustee Wilbeck. Vice President Munoz is absent. President Vlado. Okay, that is that. Is there a motion to adjourn? And a second? Was there a second? I'm sorry, Hector, thank you. On that motion, and second to adjourn, Trustee Burke. Trustee Casillas. Trustee Egan is absent. Trustee Godeski Rodriguez. Trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Scafane. Trustee Wilbeck. Vice President Munoz is absent. President Vlado. It is 8 o'clock. The board will not return.